I'd like to welcome everybody to the August 24th, 2020 specially called city council meeting. It is now six o'clock, or four o'clock, old habits for hard break. Mr. McGrew, will you call the roll for us, please ma'am?
Mayor Bill Hastings.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Chris Harris.
Here.
Council member Frank Carroll.
Here.
Council member Janet Court.
Here.
Council member Duran Dowdell.
Here.
Council member Jennifer Jordan Stockdick.
Here.
You have a form.
Thank you ma'am. Tonight, our invocation will be given by Rabbi Steve Sheik with the Tree of Light Ascianic congregation. Following that, we will have Corporal King who will lead us in the, oh, it's been, isn't it? Who will lead us in the pledge to the US flag and the pledge to the Texas flag. And I'm sorry, it is going to be Corporal King. So Rabbi Sheik, if you will take the stand.
Oh, Bahashamim, our Father in heaven, I thank you today for the blessings we enjoy as citizens of the United States, the great state of Texas and the city of Katy. This afternoon, as we come together to tend to the business of this community, I ask that you bestow on each person assembled here your divine wisdom and patience. Grant to each representative your favor in meeting the unique challenges confronting them today. I pray that we will quickly see an end to the COVID crisis and a return to full work in school. We pray especially for the city's police and fire departments, guide them in their daily task of keeping this city safe. Lastly, Father, I pray that those who are even now being affected by the two storms along the coast, may there be no loss of life from either of these storms. Protect the Coast Guard and the other agencies who put themselves in harm's way for the lives of others. We ask these things in the name and the merit of Yeshua HaMecheik, Jesus the Messiah. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Pastor, Mr. Sheik, we appreciate you taking the time and being here with us. Corporal King?
Yes, sir.
You're on.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Corporal King.
You're welcome, sir.
We will move on to item number three, public comments. I'd like to remind the audience that they have three minutes to speak on any item not on the agenda and the city council cannot respond. If there's anybody wishing to participate via teleconference, at this time, if you'll press star nine to raise your hand. When you do, please state your name and your address.
Mayor, we do have a caller on the line and IT will promote them now.
Okay.
JD, I see him on the line and you should be able to speak.
Mr. Chuck, are you here?
Looks like they're having an issue. It shows that he is unmuted. Is it? We have a caller, eight three two seven one zero one one zero one.
Thank you. On the chat, it looks like he just said he's on the phone.
We're showing them as unmuted. JD, will you make sure that the phone isn't muted on your end perhaps? I now show a phone line. If IT, will you unmute it?
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can now hear you.
Okay, sorry about the technicals. All right. On December 10th, 2019, the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality inspected the Katy Mills Dam. Yes, Katy has a dam. In short, your dam failed the inspection. On May 12th, 2020, the State Commission on Environmental Quality issued their formal report. I sent you, the mayor, a copy of the report on May 21st. You've never returned my calls or given me an audience to discuss the situation. On June 10th, Lindsey Kerr from your office emailed me. We continue to work through the report and I expect to have an update to you by the end of next month. Well, that's amounted to crickets. In the state report, the emergency action plan was required and nothing has happened. Why does the city think that going back to the state and asking to have the dam designation rescinded is going to fix things? Why doesn't the city of Katy follow the Texas Administrative Code Title 30, Chapter 20, Chapter 299 laws set forth by the state? Why didn't the city apply to the state with their development plans for the approval of the Katy Dam? Was this because it would have slowed down the development or because you were unknowaged or just don't care? To this date, the citizens of Fort Bend County who have been flooded from this pet project of the city of Katy would like to know where the emergency action plan is as required by the state. The neighbors of Pin Oak Village would like to know what corrective measures to the emergency spillway are going to be undertaken as required by Title 30, Chapter 299. In construction of your boardwalk, you eliminated the 130-foot elevation requirement in the legal agreement made February 23rd, 1998 with MUD 37. You are now relying on the berm and that agreement to be your dam. The problem is the berm doesn't go all the way around at not 130 feet. You totally ignore that agreement and homes have flooded as a result of your actions, 35 homes to be exact. Your own inspection report for the spillway showed that it didn't meet the elevation criteria either. So why can't you build the emergency spillway according to the state dam construction guideline since you've got a dam after the fact? This city of Katy doesn't want to follow the laws of the state but would rather make their own laws and interpretations regardless of the impact on surrounding communities. The city will require other developers to get approvals, but oh no, the city of Katy can build anything they want the way they want it. I quote your city administrator Byron Airbeer, February 2016. We're going to become the banker. We are going to build it ourselves. We have more control over when it can be done. So now you have a trifecta. You're the developer, you're the banker, and a bad neighbor, the kind of neighbor nobody wants to have.
Thank you, Mr. Chuck. We will move on. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? If you would like to speak, please press star nine and we will get with you.
Seeing none, Mayor.
Okay, we'll move on to item number four, comments from the public on any items on the agenda. If anyone would like to speak, once again, please press star nine.
Seeing none at this time, ma'am.
Okay, we'll move on to item number five, Texas Pride Presentation on garbage and recycling service transition. And we have Kevin Atkinson who is going to give that presentation. Kevin?
Yeah, I'm here. Can't get my video to start for some reason. Good to see council mayor. Appreciate the time this afternoon. We are rocking and rolling. I've got a station. Let me see if I can get this up for you guys. You guys able to see that?
We can see your screen.
All right, sounds good. So long story short, we're about 72% of the way, complete with our container rollout. About 10,000 of the 14,000 carts we're rolling out have been delivered so far. We will be coordinating this week with Republic on the dumpsters for the common areas, as we refer to them, the parks, police office, et cetera. Between Wednesday and Thursday, essentially what will happen there is Republic will pull their containers and ours will slide in right behind. So there shouldn't be much of a delay on no container at these sites. We are watching the storms in the Gulf. Obviously, that's on everybody's mind right now. At this time, we don't anticipate there being any delay on getting containers rolled out before service begins. We also don't anticipate there being any eruption in services that are expected to start next week. Republic, we've been talking with Republic through this as well. Obviously, we're both here to support the city, so we'll coordinate together should anything happen as far as storm debris, flooding, et cetera. But you guys will have the benefit of having two solid waste companies supporting you through this transition and if there's any issues with the storm. Republic will be removing their containers starting tomorrow as well. They'll be working to get as many pulled out as possible. They don't anticipate any issues as long as the storm doesn't have a significant impact on us as well. They will be providing a final removal for stragglers on Labor Day, Monday, September 7th. So any that we see or emails or calls that we get, we'll keep a spreadsheet and provide that to Republic to make a final run on the 7th for those containers. As far as the service itself, we are again ready to go here as well. Notices outside a, you know, staple at the foreheads, we've sent it out in the mail with the water invoices on your side, I believe. Newspaper has mentioned it, Facebook, both our page and the city's page. Our webpage has a specific city site with details on the service, as does the cities. And then we're also attaching the notification on all the cards as well. So at the very least, somebody sees that card at the end of their driveway and that flyer sitting under the handle with all the information forming in both English and Spanish. First day of service for us will be Tuesday, except for really the area that's going to have Monday service that had been used to Friday service. Almost everybody should see consistent week-to-week schedule. The area in blue, the Monday service area is going to have about a 10-day window. So those routes for us, especially that first service, they will probably run a little bit longer than they usually will moving forward. The area north of Franz in red will actually have two services in one week, so that should, you know, those residents should be happy with that. Rails for the most part is on the same service schedule, so it should be, it should be a pretty smooth transition. So hopefully hurricanes don't throw some curveballs at us, but we're not anticipating anything at this time that we haven't seen in the past and can't handle. So I, my guess is container delivery, as long as things run consistently and we're able to continue delivering this week without interruption. I'm assuming will be done by hopefully Thursday at the pace they're rolling carts out. So just we'll play it by ear from there, but we're looking good right now. You guys have questions for us? I'm happy to, happy to take them and I'm looking forward to, looking forward to next week.
All right, well, thank you, Kevin. We appreciate all your work on this. We will move on to item number six, discussion of Pitt Road Detention Pond Spillway and Pine Forest subdivision. This was requested by John Roach. Been pending since March 6th of 2020, postponed until August 1st for an in-person meeting. Mr. Roach, are you on the line?
If you show he is joined, let me get him unmuted real fast. John, I see you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you now.
Okay, very good, very good. My name is of course John Roach and I've been to several of your meetings in the past and one of the people who flooded the worst in Pine Forest. And after doing, well, you know, Orville Schoenfeld, he brought all the plans to the detention ponds. And coming to find out after getting, and I should have in front of you, all the elevation certificates that I collected from some of our people on Magnolia Street, that the detention pond is currently, the older detention pond is 149 feet, the spillway. My elevation is 148.4, okay? And some people are around there or lower. My request is to get the, that detention pond lowered, plus did, if anyone engineered the second one at 148 feet spillway, they would have noticed, or they even surveyed Pine Forest, which I know that Costello did survey our subdivision, because I saw the guys out there surveying and talked to them. So my request is to have the spillway, while you have all this machinery over there, to lower the spillway to 147 feet, so water will actually spill into the detention pond before it spills into Pine Forest. Does that make sense? Now, that spillway is higher than us, then no water is going to go in there until it seeks its level, as water always does, correct? So I'm requesting that both the spillways on the new one being constructed right now and the old one to be lowered to 147 feet.
Okay, Mr. Roach, on this call, we also have our city planner, Anas, and we have Stephen Wilcox with Costello.
Okay.
Thanks, Mayor. Stephen, why don't you put up that slide? All right, Stephen, if you want to kick it off?
Yeah, well, so, you know, back when we did the study for y'all, we had this question back then, just as a refresher. So the, and I know it's hard to envision and conceptualize because it's a large area, but the, the, the difference is that the hundreds-year water surface elevation at the detention pond is not the same as it is at Pine Forest. So for example, at the Pine Forest, when only a ditched outfall, yes, is about 148.6 is a hundred year. Well, if you translate up to the detention pond in the hundreds year, it's about 153 to 154. So at the same elevation that the 148 in Pine Forest, you do have about somewhere between five and six foot of water going across the new weir. So it's not, it's not a level, it's not a water level from the Pine Forest all the way back to the detention pond. And this profile right here shows what you're seeing, as I hope you can see it, so if you can't, please tell me.
Stephen, it went away.
It went away.
It went away.
Your, wow, the files, you had it up in the beginning.
Let me try, let me try sharing it again.
There it is.
You'll see that? Okay. So this dash line right here is the flow line or the bottom of the channel. And this is from Willow Fork, it's zero upstream almost to Pitt Road. This is upstream of Clay right here. This is from the report that, that we did for y'all a couple of years ago. I have added in markers where the Pine Forest outfall is and then the upstream end of the detention pond where the new weir elevation is going to be. So you can see this is elevation on this axis right here and this is length. So if you go to Pine Forest at 148 and you were to straight line that back, you can see there's a good five to six foot difference. So, I mean, a water, so we have a hydraulic gradient that occurs along the creek. And that is based on the slope of the creek, the slope of the surrounding topography, restrictions in the channel like Morton Road, the bridge, Franz Road, all those sorts of things. And then the vegetation. And so if we set that weir elevation at 148 as part of your East Pond expansion that we did in December to, truthfully, I think we maximized the benefit point at Pine Forest. That's the best reduction we could get at that point based on that, the new design pond. So I guess with that, is there any questions on that? I know it was kind of a, a little bit of a heavy technical answer to the question.
It sure is. And still, I'm no engineer, but I'm a common sense guy. And 148 from 148.4 doesn't leave much, much room, you know?
But yeah, it's just you can't compare the 148 to up at where the weir is. So that's not a comparable elevation. You need to compare the 148 to the hundreds year at the weir, which is a 154.
Okay. But that still makes that higher than what we are, before water will spill over on that spillway.
It would spill over before it got to 148 in Pine Forest. That's how the pond is designed.
That's, that's how it's designed?
Yes, sir.
And you designed it? Costello designed it?
I helped design that weir structure for the East Pond expansion. Yes, sir.
Okay, so what you're telling me is there's no way you could lower those, those?
Oh, it, I mean, they could obviously physically be lowered, you know, you can't go any lower than the flow line of the channel. What we found is if you start lowering it, you start losing the benefit as you move downstream, because the ponds fill up, then fill up too early in the storm event, that that volume is not available. When the peak is coming and you need it to, to reduce that floater in the peak part of the storm. So that's, that's what we found as when we lowered that weir.
I don't know, it, it doesn't make sense to me. You know, I mean, Pine Forest is a subdivision that was here a long time as part of historical Katy. And if you don't take care of the subdivision, it's not a good thing. You know, I mean, so many people flooded in Katy, and I'm not even talking about Harvey, I'm talking about Tax Day. Now, I remember going to that, that detention pond and there was no water in there after Tax Day flood. It was, it was minimal inside there. I don't know if any of y'all went by that, that, any of the council members went by the detention pond after the Tax Day flood, but there wasn't water in it and we flooded. Okay, so that's another reason why I, I'm not wasting my, I'm trying not to waste my time here. I sent you pictures of the spillway, I sent you pictures of the elevation of the spillway, and I've showed you everybody's elevation certificates. Now, if elevation is different in all different areas, or they don't use the same gauge, I'm sure that it could be off by a few inches. True?
It can be off by multiple feet, depending on how, you know, the further away you get from Pine Forest, the less you can compare your elevation to the remaining things that are occurring.
Well, that's my presentation, and I think that there could be something done about this for Pine Forest. You know, and it's not only Pine Forest, it's the others, it's 10th Street. The people who flooded on 10th Street down here and in Lower Katy by the high school, you know? Now, I know we put that big seven-foot pipe in from First Street that comes into Buffalo Bay, but that's just adding another seven-foot pipe into that, into that drain, you know? So, you know, and I have another question, is anything being done with Fort Bend County between 90 and 10 and beyond 10 to widen those? And clean them out? That's, that's another huge question. And we don't want to flood again, this is twice that we flooded in the subdivision and don't want it to happen again. I know that everybody thinks that this new canal back here is fixing everything, but I don't think it will. We might have widened it and instead of having the V, we've got a square now. It probably holds more volume of water, but point being, it's going to flood again if we don't lower these detention ponds, because we want water to go in those detention ponds, right? Don't we want water to go in there? That's what they're there for, right? Hello? Am I on?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, I'm just making sure that I didn't cut off. But I still think something could be done for us on that. And while you got the machinery over there, it doesn't take much to do it, you know? So anyway, that's, that's what I wanted to talk to you all about. I think it's pretty important to the people here in Pine Forest. You've got 70 homes and about 64 of them flooded, you know? So I guess we're going to have to wait to see another 20-inch rain, huh, before we find out if we flood again? Is it, right?
Regardless of what elevation that weir is at, if you have a 20-inch rain, you probably would still flood again. I'm not, all the pond is doing is reducing the risk of flooding in future events.
Okay.
It doesn't remove, it doesn't remove the risk of flooding.
It doesn't remove the risk of flooding. Okay, so this, this $10 million project around that I'm looking at out my back window of my game room here was, was, wasn't worth it then? True?
No, I disagree.
65 inches? Sure, you're going to flood. 20? I don't think you should, you know? But anyway, that's my presentation. I hope you could do something with it. It sounds like you won't. So, you know, there's other ways to get things done. So we'll have, I'll have to look at other ways, but thank you very much for your time. I sincerely appreciate it. And I hope you all have a great day.
All right, John, thank you very much for your, your presentation and your input.
Thank you very much. You all have a great day.
You too, sir. Okay, we will move on to item number seven, the fiscal year 2020 monthly report, bank statements summary check register. This is through July the 31st, 2020, and it's an information item only. We'll move on to item number eight, which is consider approval of the meeting minutes. A for the 7/6 2020 special minutes. B is the 7/13 2020 regular minutes. C is the 7/20 2020 special minutes. And D is the 7/27 2020 special minute. Do I have a motion? Motion. Motion to the second. Is there any discussion? Having none, we'll call for a vote on, in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to item number nine, consider a resolution. Item number 9A, consider a resolution approving the issuance of refunding bonds by Katy Development Authority in the amount of $8 million.
Motion.
I think, hang on.
Sorry.
I think we have Lauren Morales and Christina Miller do a presentation meeting.
Christina and Lauren, you're mute.
You're in mute now. And I believe Lauren's on the line to give a quick presentation. He had a one-page summary that was really helpful.
Good afternoon. This is Lauren Morales. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon. All city councilmen should have one-page refunding analysis overview in front of them, prepared by our office. We've reviewed this with the Board of the Katy Development Authority for the past several months. An opportunity exists to refund bonds from, that they issued in 2012 for debt service savings. And we have discussed this with the Katy ISD and are seeking approval from the city to go forward with this refunding opportunity.
Okay. Now we can call for a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Chris, statement by Janet. Is there any discussion?
Just a quick clarification, so we're, the gist of it is we're refinancing Katy ISD bonds from the Merrill Center.
And is correct.
Okay.
Mayor, for the record, I have the second by Stockdick. That was.
That's fine.
Janet seconded is what I heard.
I did, but that's okay. It doesn't matter. Yeah.
Is there any further discussion?
Uh, yes, if Chris is done?
Yes.
Um, so I had a, a discussion with Byron about it earlier today. So just to verify, this refunding of this bond, it's strictly a KISD liability and it's not going to impact the finances of City of Katy. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Not, we'll call for a vote all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to item nine B, consider a resolution authorizing the issuance of unlimited tax bond series twenty twenty by Fort Bend County Municipal Utility District number one sixty-one, not to exceed one million, seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. This is in reference to reserve of Katy. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
I'll second.
Hey, we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item nine C, consider a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement with C Environmental LLC for emergency utility services at wastewater plant, water plants and lift stations. This is for Public Works Department continuing continuity of operations.
Motion.
I believe we have C Environmental. If there's any questions, they'll be able to answer them. Okay, no question. We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
I have a quick question. So it's, this is just for emergency events or in one of the documents that I read, it almost sounded like they were also going to pick up some additional responsibilities or they're not, are they taking over any of the day-to-day operations or?
No, Janet, they're not. Um, they are actually, this is for emergency operations. Um, just like this morning at seven, we were hit with four water main breaks.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so to get four water main breaks for our crews, our size of our crews, there's, there's just no way of doing it. So we have somebody in place to do these emergency repairs in a case like that. So it's not to take over day and day operations. It's for emergency operations.
For like this morning when you're a little shorthanded, can't handle the load?
Yes, that we all go call them and they can come in and, and help out.
Okay. Thank you, Elaine.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Having none, we'll call for a vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number ninety, consider a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a short-term sale agreement with Idemia Identity and Security USA LLC to upgrade the existing live scan systems to Windows ten operating system at the Katy Police Department.
Motion. Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Will we skip nine D, Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're good.
Can we go ahead and call for a motion? I mean, uh.
You can keep going.
Yep, man, we just, just, just read the caption for, for D and just handle D.
Okay, is there any further discussion on E? Art, is that right? Did you say just continue with E and go to D?
Yes, you go, go to D.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now we'll go back to nine D, a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a support agreement with Tyler Technologies for maintenance and support services for software in Katy Police Department.
Motion.
Motion. Second.
Any discussion?
Steve, again. Is Noah on the phone or maybe you guys know? I was, uh, when I looked at him, they have a whole suite of, um, systems for public safety. So I'm just wondering which are we, do we use the whole suite or do we just use pieces of it?
Noah, you're muted.
Councilmember, we use them all to just update the software that we have now. Most of the departments, Windows two, Delphi seven, and a lot of that is not compatible with us anymore. So we're having to move it to Windows twenty-ten. That includes all the computers, uh, the detectives as well as the computers onboard, the Tahos and, and the demand staff and the CID staff as well. So it's just a software, software upgrade.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And we will move to item number ten, consider an ordinance appointing Alan Chapman as an alternative member to the zoning board of adjustments. This is filling a vacancy. Ms. McGrew, can you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance appointing Jeffrey Allen Chapman as an alternate member to the zoning board of adjustment.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Or is there any discussion? Okay, no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number eleven, tax assessor collector for record only, no action required. Twenty twenty certified appraisal role, certified approved taxable value of three billion, five hundred and three million, six hundred, sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars. Uh, item number B is the twenty twenty certified collection rate, one hundred percent debt rate collection. Moving on to item number twelve, the proposed twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget. And we will announce a public hearing to be proposed on the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget at four P M. on Monday, September twenty-eighth at a special city council meeting. Number twelve B is discuss the proposed tax rate. And I think Andy has a presentation on that.
Well, not a presentation, but basically just a description of the situation we're in. We have two tax rates to consider, one being the new tax we based on Senate Bill two, uh, from two thousand and nineteen legislation, which addresses property tax reform. And another one that may be allowed by a disaster declaration by the governor in conjunction with an accord by Senate Bill two. We start by, by introducing what, how property tax works. So we have a rate and it's, uh, it's broken up into two pieces. One goes to debt and then we call it the INS rate. And the other one is the operations and maintenance rate. That covers basically everything else that the city needs to provide service. Is the O and M rate that's, that's really governed by in the past, an eight percent increase every year. And, but now based on SB two, that's been cut to three and a half percent. Now, there is, um, an allowance for cities that are less, have population less than thirty thousand. They allow a fifty, a five hundred thousand dollar increase on top of the three and a half percent. So we get three and a half percent increase for O and M plus five hundred thousand dollars. That, that, the three and a half percent plus whatever rate that will get us to five hundred thousand dollars combined is called the de minimis rate. Now, previously we had the effective tax rate, which was that eight percent growth and we couldn't go beyond that. So if our, whatever we, we, we decided what we needed to cover, put our debt plus the O and M, as long as it didn't exceed the effective tax rate, we were good. Um, but I don't think we're going to have that situation at three and a half percent. We, we can, we're allowed, because we're a small city, to go above the effective tax rate, which is now called the no new revenue tax rate. If we choose to go to, take the de minimis tax rate, if you remember, that's three and a half percent plus five hundred thousand dollars, we are allowed to go above the no new revenue tax rate. And when we started the budget process at the beginning, that's what we worked towards the, um, and there is another rate to consider and that is, um, what, what I described before was, um, this would, this rate could be considered allowed, uh, by the disaster declaration in, in combination with an accord in Senate Bill two. And if you look in the Senate Bill two, there is a piece that says that in, in a declaration, you can use the eight percent. Now, in the beginning, there was some confusion about the interpretation of that and whether property tax really felt was damaged by, by this disaster COVID nineteen. So what we did, we proceeded with the three and a half percent. And we were able to arrive at a, at a balanced budget at three and a half percent using our de minimis rate. Our, our no new revenue tax rate turned out to be four point three three eight five oh. And our de minimis tax rate is point four four seven one six eight. And, uh, so that, that de minimis tax rate basically gets us back to the original budget from two thousand twenty, pre-COVID budget. So it doesn't allow for increases. So it just gets us back to the budget. And, um, but the reason for us only allowing, allowing ourselves to get back to the two thousand twenty budget, original budget, is basically due to the COVID effect and its effect on, on the economy, in particular, uh, sales tax, which is a major resource of revenue for the city. I don't want to get into what, what it would look like if it wasn't, if we weren't in this COVID situation. But we've had some promising, uh, results from sales tax in the past. I mean, just, just this month. Um, I know that our, let me find in my notes. Okay, so in August, our, our sales tax revenue was approximately one point five million dollars, which is three hundred and sixty-six thousand greater than the same period last year or thirty-two percent. That's pretty good. That's hopeful. So what we're, what we were planning on doing is taking a look at, um, the budget again at, at the end of the first quarter and second quarter. And if, if sales tax and the economy turns around, um, we would be asking for increases in the budget to allow for, um, increases in pay for the staff and other planned projects. So if we chose the eight percent, um, our tax rate would be point four five nine five seven three, which would give the city an additional three hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. So it, you can see how our, our, our tax rate would have been limited no matter what because of, uh, because of the three and a half percent, even at eight percent, there's not enough, uh, there's not enough rate there to get to be able to apply it towards our taxable, um, property value. There's just, it was a huge increase in our taxable value. And I can speak to that in, on the bud, budget cover page. The tax revenue has increased by one point five million and basically because in some, and, and the new tax, the tax for new property, that is, was one point three six seven million. So basically our increase was, was derived from the additional new property that we asked, that we added to our tax rule. So that's the background of the decision we have to make. We have a balanced budget and question?
What, what was the eight percent tax rate? I was not ready for it when you said.
Okay, eight percent tax rate would be four point, excuse me, point four five nine five seven three.
Four five nine five seven three.
Yeah, and I calculated this on my own and then I called the county to, to, uh, run it through their program also. And we're within two hundred thousandths of a point. So it is close and that's probably what it's going to be. But it does, it does get us an additional three hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. Again, though, my, my, my fear is what, I can tell you what I don't want to happen is that the state comes and asks for this back, this three hundred and ninety-eight thousand. That might be a little painful for us. But nobody knows.
Yeah, I mean, Andy, if the state comes back and does that, they're going to have to do that to every city. And look at all the cities that are doing that, so. I don't know. I mean, we're all just guessing whether that would happen or not happen, so.
I understand that.
But we're not, we're not necessarily just guessing, right? The governor, the comptroller of accounts, who's the chief financial officer of the state, and the attorney general, who's the chief law enforcement officer of the state, as well as the one who interprets the laws, uh, all of them have said that the eight percent is not something that is, that retros back to January first and they have advised against the eight percent. I understand that Mayor Turner in Houston are going a different path, but we do have that guidance. I, as of a couple of weeks ago, maybe it's changed and I don't know. But as I understand it, that's the guidance we have. Is that still true?
No, no, what it is, is that, you know, from a policy standpoint, they, they have said that, but the attorney general has not issued, issued an official opinion, nor has the comptroller, nor has the, nor has the governor issued an official opinion on the, on the issue. That's why there's, there's that confusion. The attorney general could have issued an attorney general opinion, uh, long before this three or four months that we could have been. And that's why we're in this, I guess, no man's land right now. They have, from a policy and from a, from a public statements, they've said that's not supposed to be it, but none of them have officially issued rulings from, from either the comptroller nor the, nor the attorney general saying that, that, uh, you cannot do the eight.
Has anyone issued a statement the other direction? Has anyone issued an official statement saying, go ahead with the eight percent?
There, there's no one else who a statement would, would come from, other than the, the home root cities that are going forward. There's no one, no else, no one else it would come from. It would, it would have to come from either the AG's office or the comptroller or the governor.
Okay, and all three of them, whether officially or not, all three of them have said that their reading of the laws, that it does not retro back to January first, the eight percent, because there was not a disaster declaration of Jan, as of January first. Is that still, that's my understanding. I'm still trying to get my hands around this.
I, I think, I don't think they, they've said because of a date, because of the date. What they're saying is that that wasn't the intent of the, of the, of the, uh, of the statute. And so that, I think, I haven't heard them say specifically, it's because there wasn't one on January one. I, I, I just think from what they're saying is that that wasn't the intent of the statute for, for this type of decoration, so.
I'm going to give you, I'm going to give you a little homework then. Um, so the tax values get set January. the tax values get set January first. As of January first, there was no disaster declaration. And so this allows for a reappraisal. But I believe what they've said is that the appraisal happens January first, so you don't knock it down to fifteen percent. So I would, I would go take a look at that, and I think we need an answer to that question. Because, you know, before we go following Houston uh in lockstep, uh I think we need to get some good answers to that before we break with, even if it's informal guidance, uh it's informal guidance from high places.
And councilmember, I I've looked at that councilman, and you're in that same situation where we're where we're gonna where we're gonna be. Is it, there's there's that that argument there, and it's not a a reappraisal. Ne- neither one of these would be a a reappraisal, and so so that's, that's where we are. We are where we are in this legal quagmire. There's not gonna be any, from what I can tell from this government, no further clarification from the governor, and so it's it's either the the, we have to decide if we're going to to take the risk or we're not going to take the risk. There's there's not any further clarification that we can get from from the governor or the or the AG's office, because they're they're still at the same situation where they were back when they talked about it.
All right, what's the guidance from TML?
Same same thing, is that is that you 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 run a risk. They believe, TML believes that the that that the law says what it says from a city standpoint, but would you still have, you still have uh strong words from the governor, the attorney general, and the and the comptroller, which you have to listen to them, because there there are the people who are in control of that. But then you have the cities that are saying, that's not what the language says. So this is one of those situations where where a a council has to weigh that risk. And and nobody's gonna can 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 take that away from you guys on on whether I should weigh that risk.
But Mayor.
Court, I believe, has had her hand up since the beginning.
Oh, me?
Yes.
Okay, one of my questions was about the TML. Um also, Art, do you have any idea of how many other cities similar to our size have are going with the eight percent?
No, it's it's been, it's been a hot hot spot. It's it's about about fifty fifty. I mean, you're just, just everybody's looking at at what what helps them best, and with the ones from my clients that that I represent, I can tell you, it's right at about, right at about about sixty forty with the uh with with not, it's about sixty forty with the three point five.
Okay, I have another question. Um Andy, you mentioned that they could come back and ask for the money back. Is there a a timeframe in which they could ask for that?
What I I said that I I what I don't want to happen is for them to ask ask for it back. I didn't say that they could. Um so nobody knows what what what's gonna happen after this, if we make this decision.
Okay, so maybe that question was should have gone to Art. Is there a um timeline in which they could come back and ask for that money back?
Well, no, there's there's not a a timeline. If they make the decision that it was, it was a, it was an unlawful unlawful tax, then at at any point, they they could decide that it was a unlawful tax. And naturally, there'd be litigation that would follow that, but 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 if they make that determination and they do whatever measures that they have to enforce that, then we would would uh have to pay that money back.
So could they come back ten years from now, or within a year or two years, or?
Yes, they either. Both answers are are correct. They could, they could come back as far as far as ten years. They could, they could uh um they could make it as short. They could set a timeline. They could go to the legislature to determine what they can do. This is, this is one of those where it was one of the un- unintended harms in the rush to to pass legislation last session.
Okay, so now let me ask another question. We we've got, I'm sorry, Chris, I I I promise I'll touch up to this. We've got, we've got two hurricanes that are um aiming for Texas, which could, if they come this way, then we could be incurring a natural disaster. So um if that were to happen, then does that kind of make of this whole discussion a moot point? Cause he's already declared a na- uh disaster for, I well, I believe it was uh twenty counties, fifteen to twenty counties?
No, 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 it doesn't. The argument, the argument is 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 not on whether he he declares them now, because remember, remember, the 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 language says, says if there's been a disaster declared by by either either the governor or the President of the United States. The President of the United States declared a national disaster on the on the thirteenth of of March. He declared a a national disaster for for the for all the all fifty states and the and the territories. So there's already been a national disaster declared, so that wouldn't change the situation where we are now. The the governor's in interpretation is gonna be the same whether we get another hurricane this year or the or or next.
Okay, so I guess I'm confused in the definition of a of a of a disaster declaration. You're saying there's no difference between one for a natural disaster like a hurricane versus
No, ma'am, no, ma'am, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that is that the the argument about there being that what what the the governor has has said is that basically is that there wasn't a natural disaster declared, um I believe said on January first. So it doesn't apply. If that's his argument, then it's not, it's not going to apply, because we had a natural disaster. It can't be the only argument, because we just had a national disaster declaration on the on the on the thirteenth of March.
Okay.
So so the COVID, the the COVID natural disaster that we're using, that's the same natural disaster that that we were used. Either either it's gonna count or it's not gonna count, because it's the same one. The 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 president, president declared it on on March thirteenth. And the and the statute says, whether it's the president or the governor.
Art, two follow up questions. No, I'm sorry, Chris, go ahead. Sorry, I'm sorry.
Real quick, I just want to be sure that everybody, we understand, because I think sometimes we lose translation here. We're talking, we either way, we're gonna be reducing our tax rate to the lowest it's ever been in KD at for at point four five nine five seven three or point four four seven one six eight. We're lowering taxes. And, you know, this in, this in us raising taxes are comparable to any other city. There's cities of all sizes, rural, urban, that have gone this route. If we have exceptional city services that are pending, this is our big year. This is, it's we've had a disaster declared, we've had economic harm done to the city. So I um I I think that Art and TML's interpretation is right. There's, there's always guess difference of opinion and uh legal matters, but we are already, we're talking about, we're not raising taxes. We're lowering taxes to the lowest tax rate it's ever gonna be. So just uh sometimes we we get off in translation there, so I want to be sure we we know what we're all discussing here. Thank you.
Right, right, but we're discussing lowering taxes, we're lowering taxes even further. Um so whether we're gonna use a loophole to tax people for, to that, yeah, it's a loophole, but to tax people further than what the legislature has set, which is three point five, is is really the question. Art, I don't know, is this the guidance you're giving us to raise the uh to raise it to eight percent? Is that the guidance you've given us?
No, sir.
Or are you saying, okay, so good. Um and then number two, TML's guidance, didn't that guidance predate the COVID? Uh, COVID crisis?
No, sir. No, sir.
They've given new, cause, cause the guidance I got uh was back when HB two uh HB two?
Most of what there's been, I think, there's been several updates, and it's been even as late as last month because of this issue. And there was, there was guidance that they would, that they give the same as as what I'm giving you, giving you today. This is what the governor says, this is what the AG says, and 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 this is what you have the options to do. That's, that's the same guidance, and that guidance, it's 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 not uh from back in January or February. That guidance is here recently, because this is a situation where where it's one of those where you as as a councilman has to have to weigh your your risk on this. This is not one where there's some bright line that you can say, okay, this is it. In reading the statute, when you read the language of of the statute, it appears to be a bright line to me. But when you have the three people in the state of Texas who are responsible for that, that says, that's not what it means, that should give anybody some pause. And even even if you, even if the language says what it says, and the and the language says that, says that if the governor or the president declares a a disaster, that's what it, that's what it says, plain and simple. But you have the three people who are responsible for the enforcement and the implementation of those laws, say say no. I mean, that's, that's the situation where you.
You have a matter of interpretation, and having gone back and read what the, what those three individuals stated, that's not what they intended, but I understand the other side of it, which says that you can use the term loophole, but it's a matter of interpretation. If the state takes, if we were to go eight per- eight oh eight percent and the state took us to task, would it be only the three hundred ninety eight dollars, three hundred ninety eight thousand dollars, or would it, would we incur uh fees from our TML attorneys or from Olson and Olson? In addition to having to go to task with the state. So there's, I think, more consideration from that standpoint than just four hundred thousand dollars.
Right, the 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 only way that you would incur any any additional fees from from my firm is that if you instructed us to to contest it. If if you didn't instruct us to contest it, then you would not incur any more, any more fees. We would not, we would not go out and and uh and and contest it on the city's behalf and to uh increase any fees.
Art, my last question was, has TML agreed to indemnify the city if we go with the eight percent and we ultimately lose?
No, 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 because they have not, they're just like what I told you. And I know it's, it sounds like a bunch of a lawyer lawyer mess, but it it is what it is. They're just like with me. I'm not telling you to do it, and I'm not telling you not to do. So it's up to you to decide whether you want to do it. These are your risks. That's why, just like TML is not gonna say we want to indemnify, when you look at their and and what they said, this is what the language of the statute says. This is what the people who are charged with enforcement and interpreting say. There is, there's a difference in those opinions. You have to decide as a governmental body which one you want to follow.
Help me, number court. Um, uh Andy, you had said that at um if we get eight percent, it would result in an additional three hundred and ninety eight thousand.
Yes.
Now, do you mean that is over the three and a half percent or the additional three and a half? Can you, can you just clarify that? Basically, what I'm wanting to know is.
Using, using the de minimis rate as opposed to using the eight percent.
Yeah.
It'll result in three hundred ninety eight thousand dollars more in revenue.
Okay.
And that will all go to the O and M, because of the the debt rate is set. We only take what's needed just to pay debt, and that's it. Done. Everything else above to what we're legally allowed to charge as a rate goes to O and M.
So if they came back and they asked for the money back, they're they're gonna ask for the three hundred and ninety eight thousand, right?
That seems reasonable that they would do that. I don't know if there'll be fees on top of that, but uh it seems reasonable that they would want that three hundred ninety eight thousand dollars back, or somehow be in, be a factor in the calculation next year? What that could possibly harm us, I don't know.
Okay, so if they came back and they want, they asked us for three hundred ninety eight thousand, we have an overage in our reserves. Last year, we pulled out five hundred thousand to to buy a piece of property. So it's not like we would be scrambling to get that three hundred ninety eight thousand if we decided to take the risk. Byron, you're wrinkling your eyebrows. Do you want to weigh in on this? You're muted, muted.
Um, I would have to just echo what your attorney is trying to to tell you, and that is mostly the time we don't like, we we risk conversion, meaning we put something together, we wanna, we wanna make sure that, yeah, we might have this extra, but why did you, why did you need the eight percent? Ask that question.
Why what? I didn't hear.
Eight percent to to have critical services. We we've done a budget, we've put it together. Um, uh mayor wanted us to to use the de minimis rate and get with department heads and come up with a budget that could work at the de minimis rate. So what do you need in the eight percent? That's, that's a question. Do you need the eight percent for critical, you know, services? You know, and you gotta be able to define critical service, because they're gonna come back and say, did you need this eight percent? Because you need this eight percent because of critical services. You need it because you need fire or EMS or police. Are you, are you not able to fund that now? Mayor tasked Andy and I to get that done with the de minimis rate. And and we were able to balance that. Now, we did, we weren't able to give raises at this time. I thought we were saying we'll look month to month, quarter to quarter, but you you gotta, you gotta ask, what is it we could use the eight percent for, and does that qualify as a critical service? We can always do something, but is it critical service? Because that's what everybody's gonna have to come back and answer. You have to answer that question. Did you have the eight percent that you asked for, was it for critical services?
Okay, so um, I'm sorry, Bill, your light went on. Did you want to say something? Um. So I guess, and I guess this, I thought we would be having this discussion on Thursday. What what projects are being pulled because, if we go at three and a half percent? Because I know that we have a lot of old infrastructure that needs to be taken care of. And I guess one of my concerns is if we reduce the tax rate this year, next year is gonna, it's gonna keep getting reduced until at some point we level out. So what infrastructure projects or what what projects that we were hoping to get done are going to have to be pulled and postponed if we go with three and a half percent?
Mainly mainly the ones you had approved last year are the parking lots, the parking lots at PD, parking lots at courts, and the parking lots at um the library. That that was, that's were some of the bigger ones, okay, that we had to pull. We did, we did put the brakes on pretty hard when when the COVID hit uh and and didn't hire people that we had slated for the budget. This budget, like Andy said, tries to get pre-COVID, to get, you know, those people, those people hired on. So mainly, it's just those, it's mainly, it's just those large, you know, items that didn't get done. And now, when you're talking infrastructure, you've got to realize, if you're talking water or you're talking sewer, that's your enterprise fund. And that's a very healthy fund, if you if you're talking about.
I'm talking drainage. I'm talking street repairs and drainage.
Drainage, that that would be, that would definitely be, you know.
Chris is holding it up.
Right. So and and I understand, I understand what you, what you're putting it, but is it essential to function the services of the city in a pandemic? Do we have to have that street done? Is it, is it gonna be something that's gonna serve us everyone?
Byron, can you put a a number on that, dollar wise?
Go ahead.
Million dollars? I mean, what it, what what dollar amount are we looking at that we'd be putting on hold? Project wise?
Three parking lots? I think there were about a hundred and fifty piece, so about forty fifty.
Okay, but but we we have streets. I guess this is my concern. This is what's gonna get delayed. We have, um, Chris, it's your list. You go.
Well, there's drain, I mean, there's drainage projects all over town, and uh, you know, I I I don't, I hate to get into this this discussion on each item. We should save this probably for Thursday, because, but to say in your, in the intro to your budget, Byron, you said you have one million dollars in projects that you put off, and now you have a balanced budget exactly the same as you did last year. We're still growing, so or we're not, were you, were you, hold on, were you not planning to do any projects this year?
Would you know, you you use reserve money to cover
Right.
Unbalanced budget. Okay. So, you know, we we definitely put a pause on hiring people, not doing that. But if you look back, did not use reserves to cover unbalanced budget. So now what we're trying to do is come back and put a balanced budget that's pre-COVID. So now what we're trying to do is come back and put a balanced budget that's pre-COVID that has those projects not in it.
So we're postponing projects, we're postponing... I'm sorry, Chris, go ahead.
Tell me what you want to use. I have a mayor telling me to do this, I have a council saying, let's do this. I got to do a budget, and we're discussing the proposed tax rate. So I want to be able to get to, I mean, Andy and I have got it for the mayor right now. This is the mayor's budget, he presents the budget. If we're going to talk proposed tax rate, we have to let the taxing entity know that we're proposing to go up to 8%.
Okay. That's, I understand. And the mayor asked you to get a balanced budget, and you did, and we all agree, I think it looks great, it's balanced. That's fine. We, I don't mind starving if you have to starve. But there was a disaster declaration, and it was put in for cities, small cities, that are impacted economically. We were impacted economically. And so, yes, it's great, you have a balanced budget, that's good. We're still going to reduce the taxes to the lowest they've ever been for the citizens. We're not a big city raising taxes and grabbing stuff, but we have drainage projects, we are hiring, we have additional population, we're not hiring any more police officers this year. We have, I mean, I'm just looking at all these projects throughout the city. So it's good, I like having a balanced budget. You got one, that's the number, it looks great. But if, at the lowest tax rate we've ever had in the history of Katy, we can do some of these projects that the citizens want, I don't see the issue. So, every year, we talk about having a capital improvement fund, every year we talk about it, and we don't do it, and then we go pull something out of reserves, and we dinker around with the budget, and we dinker around with this. We have an ability to do that this year. We're always going to have a project that comes up mid-year, it happens every year. So it's worth consideration. So, budget's great. It's good, it's balanced.
And are we servicing the residents of the city the way we should, I guess? Don't have to make this decision tonight, right?
No. All right, when do I need to get it to Fort Bend County, tax assessment? You're on mute. You're on mute.
Art, you're on mute.
Half the time when I'm not supposed to be on mute, I'm on mute. So, yes, you just need to get it, right now, you've already done your designation of a person to do it. So it's just waiting on you to decide what you're going to do on this item here.
I'll make the motion to use the 8% tax rate, .459573.
Taking that motion.
Art, are we actually taking, discussing proposed tax rate? Was there an action after?
No, 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 they're not, it's my understanding that we're not discussing taking an action on the tax rate, that you guys were just discussing what you're going to do in your talks tomorrow, or when you have your budget hearing on that. That's what my understanding today was, that you were not setting a tax rate today.
This is more of an information-only discussion.
Correct.
But Art, when is the deadline for me to let the taxing authority know?
On the date, on the date that you set your tax rate. There's, on your tax calendar, Amy, it has the day when you have to set your tax rate. Becky can tell you what that date is.
Does this not affect the deadline to file the proposed budget?
Yes, yes.
That's August 29th, that's your next deadline.
Right. It follows the same calendar that we would regardless of the budget that you filed. The only thing we have to make sure of is that we follow both the budget numbers and the tax numbers. There's different numbers, different timeframe for the budget and the tax rate. When you adopt your budget, when you adopt the budget, you have to adopt your final tax rate when you pass the budget. So once you adopt your budget, you adopt your budget, and then you want to play around with the tax rate, you cannot.
And in the book, make sure I'm looking at the right here, in the book, the budget book, it has adopting the budget and the tax rate on September 28.
Yes, correct.
We have one public hearing requirement before that, Janet, that will happen, I think, on the 14th.
Yes.
And we have a couple of notice requirements that fall before that.
We don't have to make a final decision, right, until the 29th, the 28th?
But you have to make preliminary decisions, you have to make preliminary decisions based upon your rate. If you do the de minimis rate, there's one path that you have to take. And if you don't do, if you do above the de minimis rate, there's another path that you have to take. So you're going to have to make a decision before then.
Okay.
And then the workshop Thursday is no action? Because it's a budget committee workshop.
Becky, if we go 8%, wouldn't we have to have two public hearings?
One. The problem becomes in the notices that have to be published, they have to include the percentage, the rate amount, you know, we have to have all of those numbers disclosed for transparency beforehand. And then, of course, you all need time to fix the budget book if it were to happen and file it with my office by August 29th.
I don't know about the rest of the council, but I'm done beating this horse for tonight.
You're done what? I'm sorry.
I said, I don't know about the rest of the council, but I'm done beating this horse for tonight.
All right, we will move on.
Hey, I love budget season, this is the best part of it.
We will move on to item number C, scheduled public...
So that's it?
...tax rate, 4:00 PM, Monday, September 14th, in special city council meeting. And now we will go into a closed executive session authorized by chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, section 551.071, consultation with attorney regarding pending litigation, attorney-client privilege information. And the time is 5:19.
See y'all in a minute. Okay, see y'all in a minute.
Yes, the meeting is still public and being recorded.
Okay.
Is everybody here again?
I show everyone accounted for.
We will go ahead and open this meeting back up at 5:37. Item number 15. Consider resolution terminating interlocal agreement between Fort Bend County and City of Katy for fire protection in an unincorporated county. Back to September 19th, 2020. This was approved September 22nd, resolution number 383. And it's regarding interlocal agreement for fire and EMS in unincorporated area of Fort Bend County. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion? Having none, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and signed. Motion carries. Right, item number 15, council members' reports. Uh, let's see, we'll start. Let's just start at the top of the list, Mayor Pro Tim, Chris Harris.
Thank you, Mayor, I just want to, oh, hope the teachers and students all had a great first week back at school at Katy ISD. I know mine did, they're glad to be back in the swing of things. I had several meetings with constituents this week, and also got to meet for my first time, uh, the new Waller County Sheriff, Joe Hester, and he'll be in office until January, unfortunate circumstances, that, but, uh, glad to meet him and glad to know him, thank you.
The council member, Frank Carroll.
Well, I guess I should go ahead and say congratulations to the new Waller County Sheriff, Joe Hester, considering he is my father-in-law. And if word gets back that Chris Harris gave him kudos and I did not, it could cause consternation in the family, so, uh, we are in good hands. He's somebody who's been in law enforcement for 40 years, plus, 40-plus years, and has served as chief in Navasota, which is near and dear to Chris's heart, uh, as well as Hempstead, and, uh, somebody that's going to help, uh, as they transition to the new excellent facilities that will be serving, servicing, hopefully not too much, the residents of the City of Katy, uh, but the new jail facilities up here in Waller County, which are state-of-the-art and, uh, something that is a, a good benefit, uh, for the city. You know, as these counties continue to provide good services for the city, we continue to provide good services for our resident, it really raises the profile of the region, and that's a good thing. So that's all I've got, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, council member, Janet Court.
Um, yes, I also had a chance to meet, um, the new sheriff, uh, Mr. Hester, Sheriff Hester, I suppose. Um, so I wish him the best of luck in his, in his new capability, I'm sorry. Um, also, I just want to remind everybody with the hurricanes out there, that they haven't signed up for KT Alert, to go to the City of Katy, Office of Emergency Management, and be sure you sign up for it. Um, this was something we did not have during Harvey, and it would have been extremely helpful to have that when you're sitting in the back of a pickup truck waiting to get rescued. So I encourage everybody to go out there and sign up for KT Alert, and that's it, thank you.
Uh, Councilman Dowell.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this morning I had the opportunity to zoom with our senior citizens, folks. And Peggy and Pat are doing a wonderful job. It was a, uh, it was a fun time, a lot of laughter, a lot of carrying on. And, you know, looking at these folks, and they've taken the opportunity to expand their programs, and their day is filled with a lot of activities. And so, we get a newsletter from them on a regular basis. And, you know, I, I, you know, I'm at that point, I reminded them that when I first ran for office in, I think, 2006, I was asked a question about, you know, how I would support the senior citizens. And I said, you know, um, I, I, I quipped at some point in time in my life I would be one, well, I'm almost there. Well, you know, so we're all, some of us are there anyways. Uh, so I joined into it with the festivities this morning, and it was a, it was a great time. So Peggy and Pat, y'all do a wonderful job, just wanted to give a shout-out to y'all. Uh, also, there was a memo that came to us in our package about, uh, uh, from the, from the fire chief and police chief about some folks that had, had, have done some activities that we would normally recognize during a council meeting, uh, but we haven't been able to do that. So, uh, chiefs, thank you for this memo, uh, we've got a lot of good things in there, it's too long to read. Um, but, uh, thank you for recognizing your, your people that have done a great job. Mayor, that's all I have, thank you.
Council member, Stotter.
Mayor, um, I'd just like to thank Republic for the 20 years of serving our Katy community. And then, in the same token, I would like to welcome Kevin with Texas Pride, since we'll be, this will be our last week to make the changes. And so, just wanted to thank them on the way out and welcome Kevin to Katy, that's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Our report's pretty short, but not to be outdone, I have worked with and known Joe Hester longer than you have, right? So, I too would like to congratulate him, I've worked with him, he's a great guy, great officer, and I think he'll do a wonderful job for Waller County. Other than that, uh, just thank everybody, all y'all, all the city staff, all the employees, for what they continue to do through this pandemic. And, uh, we will get over it. Everybody keep your fingers crossed on this hurricane. I will give you my promise that we're not going to get hurt too bad. And I hope y'all don't get to call me on that, but I think we're going to be okay. So, with that, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing nobody, we are going to close this meeting at 4:44. Y'all have a good evening.